Welcome, everybody, to our August specially called meeting of the Carrick County Board of Commissioners. We're around a few minutes behind because we've been talking, but glad to see everybody out. The purpose of this meeting is to honor our Senator Norman Sanderson and our House Representative Celeste Cairns for all the hard work they did in helping us defeat House Bill, was it 442?
Yes.
That would have virtually eliminated shrimping in North Carolina. And we're very grateful for your support in the Senate. I know you had an uphill battle based on the votes there as we watched from upstairs when it's forty-seven to zero, forty-seven to zero, and some of things after that vote. It was apparent that some bad things are going on there that we need to correct, but we're going to work on that at next elections. But Celeste was able to bring it home for us in the House when it went over there, and all your colleagues that helped with that were certainly very appreciative. We just wanted to gather the community here and show our support for you. And we have a couple of plaques you can take back and hang on your office wall. And I'll turn it over to any other Commissioners who'd like to make any comments, and then I'll give them the plaques. And everybody will be free to socialize until we have our regular meeting at six o'clock. How's that? Anybody? Commissioner Waldrup?
I'll start. Good evening, everybody. I just want to recap what my experience was in Raleigh. I had never been to Raleigh, never been to the Legislative Building. I do need to give a lot of credit to Catherine Chadwick and William and Larrington for taking me through the building, showing me how to lobby and go into the offices and be bold and knock on doors. I met a lot of people, including Jess and the people from the fishing community, the people from the water community that were on our side. I learned a lot about what conservation groups, maybe how they characterize themselves. And I am proud to have gone with Chairman Chadwick to Raleigh. He encouraged me to do that. That was a great growing event for me, and I will always say yes to a trip to Raleigh because now I know what it feels like to win, and I'm not tired of winning. So, there you go. So, thank you both in our legislature, and thank you for the opportunity to be involved because now I understand what being involved means. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Waldrup. Commissioner Moore?
Well, I'd just thank you both, and on behalf of the commercial fishermen in Carrick County, appreciate the hard work. Thank you much.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess we're going to go all the way down the line. I'm a descendant of commercial fishermen. My daddy holds a commercial fishing license. It's a big part of our county's heritage, and heritage has to be protected. Thank you all for stepping up and protecting our county's heritage. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Vice Chairman Mansfield?
I would like to wish Senator Sanderson's wife a happy birthday.
Thirty-nine and home. Do we get to sing her "Happy Birthday"?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Miss Sanderson. Happy birthday to you. And many more.
Senator Sanderson has been a strong advocate for the municipalities and the counties since he's been elected here. I was disappointed to see him have to represent others because I don't like sharing you. But other than that, that's the only complaint I've ever had. And Celeste has done a great job since she's got to Raleigh. She's easy to get up with. She works hard for the county, I know, and the municipalities too. And we just appreciate you guys so much for all that you do, especially helping with the shrimp bill. But I commend you. I thank you for giving your time, and I respect all the hard work that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Mansfield. Commissioner Shin is under the weather tonight, so he has an excused absence. But Commissioner Clark?
I was unable to attend as I have work commitments, but I did keep track and was kind of in the loop as things were going on. And it was such a treat and a blessing that everyone rallied around the cause for such a significant event and to quash idiocy. And so, I appreciate both of you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. All right, I'm going to present the plaques here, and then we're going to have time for members of the audience, if they'd like to come up and say a few words at a microphone. And certainly encourage that, and I'll show your support as well for Senator Sanderson and Celeste. Certificate reads, presented Carrick County Government Certificate of Appreciation presented to Senator Norman Sanderson for his incredible efforts in defeating the inshore shrimp trawl ban legislation that would have devastated our local shrimpers, processors, and coastal traditions. The citizens of Carrick County graciously offer our sincere gratitude, and may God continue to bless you as you serve District Two in the North Carolina State Senate.
You want us to make a three-minute speech?
No, how about thirty seconds?
You're not going to be like the sheriff.
I just want to thank three groups of people. First group I want to thank is the commercial fishermen, the fishing community in this county. Because I've never seen a group react and come to Raleigh to fight for what they believe in, as this group did, and they did it in a short amount of time. And I want to thank these county commissioners for backing us up because they make a big difference in Raleigh. When your whole county commissioner group stands up and says, you know, we're for you. And then I want to thank God for giving us the wisdom to do this and the courage to do this because we did what we did, and we knew that there's always a possibility of paying a price for what we did when you stand up against leadership because we knew who was running, who was pushing this piece of legislation. And so, that's always a challenge, but it's always the right time to do the right thing. And it's not so much about what they were trying to do as how they were doing. If this thing had have been given weeks to been vetted and public input, it would have been a different situation. And we would have heard what other people were thinking about this and how our constituents felt about it. But we didn't do that. We found out, I found out late on a Saturday afternoon that it's going to be in our committee on Tuesday morning. And we got the word out, and I've never seen the response as we saw it that day. And thank you for, if you had anything to do with helping get those folks to Raleigh, they were the most organized, orderly group of people that I've ever seen come to Raleigh and lobby for a piece, against a piece of legislation. And those big fish trucks circling that building, blowing their air horns, helped tremendously. And so, we're going to have to do that again. But, you know, I had a friend of mine, and I want to thank the House because the House, once again, has come to our aid. And I had a good friend of mine who's a missionary from India who works in the Himalayas or the Malayas, whatever you want to call them. And she said it with me one time in a council meeting, and she said, you know, sometimes God uses you as a speed bump, and sometimes he uses you as a stop sign. Well, the Senate this time was just a speed bump. We slowed this terrible thing down enough that we could, we got a lot of people talking against it. And then the House was the stop sign. Next time, it may be reversed. I have no idea if there is a next time. I'm praying there won't be another next time on this particular situation because we're affecting people's lives, we're affecting their family heritage, we're affecting all of the constituents in North Carolina because ninety-eight percent of the constituents in North Carolina don't have the ability to go out and catch seafood. We have to depend on our commercial fishermen to supply it for us, and everybody loves seafood. It's one of the biggest draws we have here on coastal North Carolina. They come for the beef, but they come for the seafood also. So, thank you for all of the things that you did to help us do what we did. We had a small part to play, but I'm so proud of the House for standing up and standing against their leadership because it looked like, when it left the Senate, it looked like it was a done deal. We had no idea what was going to happen in the House. They rose to the occasion, and God bless them for speaking the things that they spoke and stopping this thing in its trail. So, thank you.
Celeste put the smackdown on them in the North Carolina House, and thank God she got all her fellow House members. I didn't, it was my first time in the House and Senate.
No way.
Catherine and William.
That's hard to believe.
I didn't realize it was two buildings, so some of them were hanging out, hiding in one building and trying to avoid the crowds. There's probably over seven hundred shrimpers and consumers and seafood folks there. And the truck circle in the building was great, but we certainly appreciate all you did. And you hit the ground running up there, and you've been very effective for us so far. Very grateful.
Well, may I speak for just a minute? So, you all, I can't tell you how proud I was to represent this community. I knew where I stood on this issue, and I knew that I was going to fight, and I knew I had a lot of other coastal legislators standing beside me. But to have you all show up the way you did, to come up there, to march around the building, to talk to folks, the social media, it just went on and on. And that really gave us the courage and the ammunition that we needed to make the case and make the case effectively to our other House members. So, thank you to this committee, I mean, community. You know, we get a lot of people up there who protest, but this was a very different group of protesters. This was families, there were kids there, folks who had to close their restaurants or the fish houses to come up when they need to work. These are people who work for a living and need to make that money, but this was imperative that they be there, and I was so proud of all of you, I have to say. So, thank you so much. Thank you to Senator Sanderson. It's an honor to serve with him. Anytime I have questions or don't know what I'm doing, first place I go is to Senator Sanderson. I know I will get great wisdom. And he stood up, he was one of the very few to stand up in the Senate. But he would have stood up if he was the only one standing, and y'all need to know that. But thank you all, I appreciate you so much. You did not need to do this. I really was just doing my job, but I'm very grateful, and I will display this proudly in my office. Thank you.
I know we have Jess Hawkins here from NC Catch. Would you like to say a few words?
I want to first thank our county commissioners. I live here, so thank you, my commissioners, for doing this. And thank you for supporting consumers, seafood consumers, and fishermen. You know, most of y'all, I'm a ding batter, so I'm from off. I moved here in ninety-six, and so I haven't commercial fished, but I am a marine biologist, and Carrick County used to be one of the leading, if not the leading, county for commercial fishing in our state. And so, it's wonderful heritage here. And then, as a consumer, if we don't have fishermen catching the seafood, I won't have seafood to catch, I mean, to eat unless I catch it myself. So, thank y'all. And I want to thank, you know, I've expressed my personal thanks to both Senator Sanderson and Representative Cairns. Thank y'all, you know, Senator Sanderson. I represent NC Catch. They're a group that tries to educate people about seafood in the state. So, we have a wonderful board. Our President Barbara Gerretti Blake couldn't be here, she lives in Carrick County. And so, thank you, Senator, for standing tall when you didn't have to stand tall. So, you didn't, you know, majority. I've worked in government for over forty years, first thirty years, and then I've seen positions taken, so thank you. And then, Celeste, thank you for leading the way in the House. And, you know, you always wonder, you know, I try to vote every election, and when that went the way it did, you know, I just couldn't believe that that was our government. That was the government that, you know, my father fought in the war for, took two bullets for. And I just couldn't believe that. And then, I was re-insured, like Commissioner said, when the House stood firm. And so, hopefully, we can help y'all continue to lead the fight, provide access to consumers. You know, we import over eighty-five percent of our seafood in our country. And so, we have sustainable, what y'all used to do, used to hire me to try to make sure that the seafood was sustainable. And we do, in our country, in our state, we work hard to try to use a science-based system. And so, it's hard to understand when you have sustainable fisheries that some people want to eliminate them and want us to eat imported seafood or not eat seafood at all. And I don't appreciate, you know, my government telling me what I can eat and not eat. So, thank y'all again, and look forward to working with y'all any way that we can. So, NC Catch really appreciates your efforts. So, thank you.
If anybody else would like to speak? I see Mr. Jerry back there. Come on up. Mr. Jerry Shill, longtime supporter of the commercial fishermen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We appreciate your support. I'm Jerry Shill. I was with the North Carolina Fisheries Association for a long time. I'm no longer affiliated, I resigned from that group. So, but I did want to mention a little bit about the process. Everybody knows that when it got to the Senate, there wasn't anything that anybody could do. Money was speaking, and that's unfortunate, but that's the way it was. The day the bill, before I resigned, 442 was introduced. I was in Raleigh that day, and I was hearing rumors about a bill about flounder. And I asked a few people, I haven't heard anything. Okay. So, I go home and get the bill or the report, the bills that were filed that day, and there's 442, just as plain as day. And it was surprising to me because it mentioned summer flounder. That's the wrong species. It should have been southern flounder. That was a technical error. That was glaring to me, and the fact that red snapper was mentioned, it's managed by the feds, not the state. But, you know, that, but those things could have been fixed. But the glaring thing to me was it only addressed recreational fishing, which was a good thing, but left commercials out of it. Now, that, you know, I was paid to represent the commercial fishermen. So, I brought that up to the sponsors and co-sponsors, including Celeste. And I was somewhat terse. You know, you do this a long time, you tend to get a little bit vocal. And I sent an email. to all the sponsors, all friends of mine, I want you to understand, all friends of mine, and I was pretty terse in my comments. I can't believe you all put your name on this bill with glaring errors, but it's got to be fixed. The first person to call me or to send me a note was Celeste, right away. She took her name off the bill after she got more information about it, and that got Kidwell involved, and then Kidwell started talking to the primary sponsor, Frank Eiler. Anyway, the point is it got fixed. That's the way lobbying is supposed to work. You point out problems that may not have been apparent, you let the legislators know, and they fix it, and it was fixed. Then we got buy-in from the recreational sector, commercial and recreational, imagine that, that were in agreement, and it passed overwhelmingly in the House. It was a good bill, and then we all know what happened when it got to the Senate. But it was Celeste that led the charge to get that done, and I'll tell you, I was impressed. I really was. I mean, it's hard, it's so hard to make this point that when you lobby, when you're, I started this job in nineteen eighty-seven. Jim Graham used to call the oldest rat in the barn, that was me. You know, there were only two legislators that were roaming those halls longer than I was going on up there, but these people become friends, some of them very close friends, and some of those very close friends in the Senate voted for this, you know, and you wonder, why on earth do you do this? They didn't call me, they didn't say, is this good or is it bad? And again, I have to emphasize, it was money that was driving it, and that's sad, folks, and that's not a Republican or Democrat issue. In this case, it was Republican leadership, and it's wrong, and we can't lose fact. To me, the bad thing was this wasn't a shrimp issue or a fishing issue, it was a money issue, and if we don't fix it, it's going to come back again, and I hope we don't lose, I mean, I resigned, but I didn't quit, so I'm going to do whatever I can to make sure we fix things in the elections next year, hopefully, but all you can do, but you can't forget prayer, man. There was a lot of prayer that went on, and one of my biggest regrets, I was there the first day y'all were there, couldn't, I was on my way the second day, and I couldn't because my wife had some issues, but I got a call from one of the fishermen's wives, Jerry, where are you? I was home with my wife. We want you to lead us in prayer. Oh, I was so sad that I couldn't do that, but God bless you all. It was a good day. When you come out of that, I saw it, I was watching on the internet, when you come out there, I can't help but tell you that there were tears in my eyes. So, God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry. We are honored to have some other elected officials here tonight. Mayor of Beaufort, Sharon Harker; Mayor of Morehead City, Jerry Jones; Register of Deeds, Karen Hardesty; and Beaufort Commissioner Melvin Cooper; and Beaufort Commissioner, Ms. Sarah Spiegler. But thank you all for coming and showing your support for Celeste and Norman. Is there anyone else would like to speak? Mayor?
Yeah, it's always good to be among friends, and there's two of our very best friends in the legislature, and I love hearing the stories of like Mary Ann and Chris's first visit to the Legislature Building. It is quite rewarding and can be a little intimidating, all the activity going there, and I remember my first time. What I remember more than my first time to the Legislative Building was the first time I went to Minnesota with Commissioner Jonathan Robinson. And we were checking in a motel room, and Jonathan and the motel, the hotel clerk were having a communication translation breakdown, so I finally walked up there and said, excuse me, I said, I speak Perlanic. May I help? And I said, this is my friend, Commissioner Jonathan Robinson, he would like to check in the hotel here. But I tell that story, it is a good story to me because if you know Jonathan Robinson and have that deep Down East brogue, and, but that was Jonathan, that was Commissioner Jonathan Robinson. And I always remind myself, how do you know where you're going if you don't know from where you came from? And there's just so much passion in this room of Carrick County, our legacy, our families, our history, and you get people riled up, they'll let you know it, and they did that. But really, the hats off and the congratulations and thanks to Norman and Celeste. You know, some people, some politicians, they cast their votes based on the next election. These two don't. They don't cast their votes based on the next election because they know what they did is the right thing to do anyway, and they don't base their votes on politics, they base it on facts and on science, and that's why so many things get done. I mean, this is a great team. We're here today talking about, you know, fishing in coastal North Carolina, Carrick County mainly, but it's not just Carrick County. I mean, they represented North Carolina, and they made it happen, but there's just so much history here, and we just thank you for all that you did and all that you continue to do, and it's not just the fishing. Mary Ann and I just left today with Hope Mission, and their growth, their plans for eastern North Carolina, and they're such a, I mean, it's such a big resume, I'm not even going to attempt to try to share with everybody what these two elected officials do for us on a daily basis. So, thank you from Carrick County and all of our friends and families for all that you do, and keep making those decisions based on facts and not politics. You do good.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Anything further from the board? All right, well, feel free to mingle. We've got another meeting starting in about ten minutes, and socialize and be merry.
Be worldly.